January tenth, two thousand twenty-four. On the topic of.
You are weighed beautiful nice on time in Buffalo town. I think sit closer.
Let's proceed with the public hearing.
He's on his way.
Okay, here we have, uh, we have, uh, Dan. Uh, on the screen. Have any caring concerning the? There are none. Are there any? Any members of the public would like to? Uh, their voice to this, they were welcome. Are there any members of the town council who would like to make any kind of conversation of elective and statutory? You will still get your hundred dollars alone.
Oh, thanks, okay, thanks.
All right. Hearing none. Um, we do have a forum here. Um, which includes Dan. So, um, I would entertain entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Mayor, it would be my advisement not to close the public hearing until we set on the agenda that we do. Want to close it. I think with public hearings, you want to keep them open for the duration that. I'm just looking at my clock. It's three more minutes. It may be silent, but that's okay.
Nothing wrong with silence.
Sometimes it allows opportunity for somebody to speak.
Yes, okay. I hate these damn things. Yes, these convenient signs. Turn into a great annoyance. Make sure the times out what you saw.
Uh, one more.
Really is.
Hi, hi.
I'm sorry if I was late.
Well, you were, you didn't get an opportunity to speak to, um. Conversation for, uh, what's the inspector and statutory officers.
Well, we haven't closed it yet. You can close it when you're ready.
All right. What was the, uh, has there been any, uh? Discussion?
No, it's just public comment right now.
Public comment on the public hearing, the receipt comment on proposed ordinance regarding the compensation of elective and statutory officers.
I missed the welcoming back of Elise Borg into. Sure, Elise, congratulations. And what we do without you? I had no comments on the compensation. I thought it looked pretty robust.
So in that case, I would rather, considering. A motion to adjourn this public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close?
Aye.
The public hearing is adjourned. All right, so now we have a few more minutes until we can follow regular meeting order. In the meantime, reason I'm sitting over here, John. Is that? Eleven days ago, I, um. Testified. And, um, while I consider myself suit and free, um. I, um, I testified again positive today. Now, I do have some sniffles. And Carolyn, uh, has some medical.
The new vaccine. I got one in May.
So I told him to stop testing.
I, I don't want to do anything that would make people feel some comfort, so that's why I'm.
Thank you so much.
Is it snowing pretty good up there?
Oh, hello, Polly. It's snowy here.
The wind hasn't started yet. Been a few hours.
Had to blast a foot and a half while part privately to get a cat out of the garage.
But it was a pretty good skin today.
It was, uh. Very wind affected. It's very windy last night.
Are we at the managing member yet, madam? Okay, I would like to call upon order at the regular meeting of the. House town council for. November tenth, two thousand twenty-four. And, uh, I hereby open. The floor for public, for citizen input. If there are any citizens who would like to address the council. Please, um, sort of indicate. Be a brave citizen to be on today. Now, we have to keep this open till.
No, but public hearing is, um.
Okay, all right. In that case, um. We'll close the citizen input and, uh. We'll call upon Polly to talk about. O P M A and otherwise known as the Open Public Meetings Act.
Okay. Thanks. So, yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you about the Open Public Meetings Act. You know, the state auditor has a little, um. Presentation and test at the end that if you want to see how well. You understand it, you're, you're welcome to do that as well, but this training itself will cover. The annual requirement for the Open and Public Meetings Act training. Um, and we can go to the next slide. So, um, and you know, this is state law and you are required to do a training. Annually, which I think is a good thing because it is always a good reminder. To think about the spirit of the act and the importance of transparency and what? What that means is that you're making your decisions openly. And having those harder conversations openly so that they're not happening, um. You know? Behind closed doors or on the chairlift or, you know, where you're getting a quorum of you. With the council, it does make it, it, there is a bit of a balance in that. You are permitted to talk to each other one-on-one. Um, so, and you know, your role as the council is. Legislative, which means that you're making legislative decisions, which often. You know, include some politicking or some opinions about should we do it this way or that way? And so, yes, you're allowed to talk to each other one-on-one on matters. But I would advise you to try to do as much as possible that you can in the public meeting. So that the public can see those hard conversations and understand. Why one person may want something one way and trying to advise the other people. So keep, next slide. So, uh, the Open Public Meeting Act applies to, um, it's pretty broad. Um, involves when you're distributing tax money or having the authority to make decisions about the public's business. Um, generally, you know, subcommittees, when you have two people, two members of the council, that is permitted to not. Uh, adhere to the public, Open Public Meetings Act. Um, that's what the planning commission, subject to the Open Public Meetings Act, your budget committee is because you have a quorum of the council on there. Okay, next slide. Um, and so the, the big question is, what is a meeting? So, um. It's a quorum. You have five members on your council and, um. Chance meetings are okay. So if. You know? I don't know you, oh, oh, isn't Sunnyside a six-pack now? So if you, all five of you ended up on Sunnyside together. Which would be more than a quorum, that's great. You just can't talk about town business. You can talk about the snow, you can talk about. Um, atmospheric rivers, but not, um. I just say that to go like Maury, um, but not to talk about, um, town matters. Um, and that's why I often will, we talk about not having. Email or texts where you're talking about town business. So it's okay to send a group email. Um, about scheduling, for example. But anything that has any substance to it, if, if the town clerk is checking on something, she'll often blind copy the council. So that you don't have that whoops reply all, and then you start having a conversation about something. And I've seen that happen a lot over the years. It's just our human nature. So we do, we need to be careful about our email, you know, not having. Town conversations kind of offline. Okay, next. So, um, again, it's fine to have social events. Um, you want to just also beware, if you have kind of an intense meeting, a lot of times we like to rehash it after the meeting. So avoid that, um. And, um. Conference call, that's so antiquated. I haven't had a conference call in several years with, I shouldn't say that, but. You know, almost, we're always doing Zooms, but it's the same thing. If you have a quorum of the council, it counts as a meeting. Okay, next one. Actually, go back one second. Um, so the cartoon there, I think, um. This is very, like, poignant, like, all those in favor of what we discussed in our email thread at Larry Stone's birthday party, say aye. And, um, I think I've given this example before, but. You know, there's, um. In another town. There was, they had a closed meeting about an issue. And then they said something that the mayor referred to the closed meeting, even though they actually hadn't discussed. The outcome, it was, you know. Did everyone look at that development agreement that we distributed prior to the closed meeting? And it ended up in. You know, unbelievable litigation and the judge had to listen through all the closed meeting tapes. Because there was this just one reference of like, oh, what we discussed before. So that's part of why I, I'm very particular about that being really careful, like. No, it's not things, you know, you want to have the discussions at the open meeting itself. Okay, thanks, next one. Um, and then I also, as a reminder, another reason not to send, um. Email group emails that to more than one other council member, be careful when we have a quorum on email. Um, but all of your emails, your town emails are subject to the Government Records Act. And I have seen grandma requests that say. I want to see all the emails that your town manager has written over the last year. Or I want to see all the. Emails that the mayor has sent related to town business. And so it's expansive. So, um, part of why we have you use the town email system is so that all your town business. Is on the town server so that if we do get a grammar request, we can turn it over. And it's just also an important reminder, you know, if someone writes a note and says. Polly's scarf was really ugly, you know? That's going to be public, so, um, it's the rule of if you don't want to see. What you're putting, what's in your email on the front page of the trib. Don't say it in the email. Um, and I used to work at the Attorney General's office and I saw that in person. Well, after the fact I had left the office, but I don't know if you remember about fifteen years ago. Mark Shirtlift, the former A G, his texts were on the front page of. The Tribune, so it's subject to grandma and people can see it, so. Um, so the bottom line with the Open Public Meetings Act. It's not just that they're not, that the public are entitled to know what we decide, what the government decides. But they get to observe how and the discussions behind it. Um, so, um, and there's this weird, um, exception, not an exception, but it's, you can. Text each other. Um, but you just can't do it during open meetings. So in the middle of a meeting. You can't text each other and say, vote yes for this next matter, right? Like, obviously that would be illegal. So, but you're not allowed to text each other during the meeting itself. Okay, next one. The location of the meeting. Um, Parks and Recreation is great for town hearings, yeah?
Can I interrupt and ask a question right now?
Sure.
Why can't you text during a meeting? It's not open.
And it's, it's specifically, um, if you go back one, the state codes specifically.
Lean over to him and say, hey, something.
Hey, vote would be on the snacks one.
Okay, okay.
That seems okay because it was out loud in, in the meeting.
Okay.
But if I texted it to you, I think it's a foul ball.
Okay.
And it's because of that specific, if you go back one, Molly. Cause I just don't, um, fifty-two, four, two, ten, um. It basically says you're allowed to text each other, just not when there's an open meeting happening.
About any subject matter.
It's just. Nothing in this chapter shall be construed to restrict, it's kind of in the negative, right? But it just says nothing in this chapter shall be construed to restrict a member of a public body from transmitting electric. Electronic message to other members of the public body at the time when the public body is not convened in an open meeting. And, you know, talking about, you know, transparency and, um. Or, you know, also along those same lines, it would be like passing a note up there, right? Like the public, though, they're going to see if Carolyn, if you. Text Elise and then you, they, the public sees you texting and then Elise looks at her phone two seconds later. And then it's like, oh, no, wait, I changed my vote or, oh, yeah, I agree with that, like. That's where the public gets very suspicious, rightly so, right? So that's, I think. The reasoning behind it. Um, and I.
Like we were texting today and talking about a couple of issues.
Totally fine.
That's fine.
Okay.
Right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, and then with respect to the scarf, uh, story. While that would be embarrassing if there was a text on the front page that said, your scarf was unattractive. It wouldn't be a violation of the Open Meeting Act because it's not of substance.
Correct.
It's not substantive.
Right, and that, that's kind of what I was thinking about, asking about, like, you can't, you can't text anything. As opposed to just like, oh, hey, the scheme was pretty good today, didn't you think so? You know, um.
Give me a ride home after.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Of course, because of this state section.
Sorry.
You can't text that, give me a ride home. You need to just ask it or wait till the meeting's over or whatever it may be. But true enough, the scarf, yeah, you can, you can send that and that's, it's not substantive. But it's just to remember that if you guys text each other earlier today about. And it's only two of you, it's legal, but remember, it's also subject to grandma. So, um, just be aware, just be reminded of that. Okay, we can go to the next one unless there are other questions. Um, so the location has to be, um. At the, um. At your regular place, for you guys, it's the library or your community center, right? Or, I don't. The Alta, um, and, um, it can be changed, you can change it. For, but you have to move the whole meeting, so you can't have half the meeting in one place and half the meeting in the other. And I've heard that the history behind that, um, is that. You know, it used to be that people would have their meetings and then I'll go to the local bar or coffee shop or whatever diner. And then basically conduct, have two meetings going on. I don't, that's what I kind of heard was. Why this changed, but the, the fact is. You keep your meetings in the same place. There are exceptions. If you do a site visit, you can go if. The, um, where your regular meeting place is closed because there's no heat, then you can switch to another place. Um, and obviously the public gets noticed, thanks. Electronic meetings, this is, of course, we're a lot more familiar with these now. You adopted, um, a resolution. A little over a year ago, um, which allows for electronic meetings, um. Generally, you're supposed to have an anchor location. Um, but of course, if we have another pandemic or there's another emergency reason. Um, you can have the meeting without an anchor location. And then, um, the state code makes it very clear. The only, the state code disfavors having closed meetings. If we do have to have them, the most often that I see are because of litigation. Real property, purchase of real property or discussion about, you know, a transaction involving real property. Um, personnel. And, um, those are the things I've seen the most in a closed session. And you have to vote to go into a closed session, there's a process to do it. So meetings are closed, you know, it's disfavored to go into a closed meeting. But there are certain circumstances where it is allowable and those are listed here.
Polly, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you have to have the closed meeting on the agenda. You can't just suddenly decide to go into one. Or it doesn't have to be noticed before the meeting that you will have one.
Yes, you do have to notice it, but what a lot of, um, towns do. Is they will just almost have a placeholder on their agenda for a closed meeting. I don't think we do that, if Alta doesn't go into closed meetings that often, so we usually kind of know about it beforehand. But, for example, the other town I was referring to that happens to be in a lot of litigation. We just have a placeholder on their agenda because we never know if there's going to be an update that we find out about. That morning, that type of thing.
My first couple of years on the council, we had, there were a lot more closed meetings and it was a placeholder for quite a long time on the agenda, but it hasn't been since. We've had one, I've had one.
Last few years.
Well, we had one.
Oh, okay. And we do have placeholder at the bottom of the agenda, kind of in the fine print.
I mean, I think if you know, like, when, when you knew that you're going to have it, you should have, if you're going to have a placeholder, actually, it's probably a good idea to actually put it on the. Larger print. But. Um. Okay, next one. Um, so just noticing the things that come up the most for, um, the council is, um. You know, that the agenda has to be set twenty-four hours beforehand. And, uh, your clerks can probably attest to this. I don't even think you're allowed to change the agenda on the Utah Public Notice website. If it's within twenty-four hours, so, um. You know, that's a firm thing and that's the idea that the public is going to know what you're going to be talking about. Um, and it's required to be on the public notice website and posted on the town website. Hopefully you all are signed up. For the council meetings, I mean, of course, Jen sends them to you or Molly sends them to you anyway. But it's not a bad idea to sign up for the public notice website for the planning commission, just so you can see what they're up to. Um, so, and you can, if you're also interested in what's going on in Taylorsville, you could sign up for theirs. It's just an email. So, uh, it's a really good system. Um, and, um. We are, so this is actually interesting. I didn't realize this. We just adopted our annual meeting schedule, didn't we? Or maybe we do, the, our procedure, we just have to do it once a year. And I noticed when I was rereading the procedures that it happens every June. So you do have to, the public, we need to notice the public and say, this is when our regular meetings are. The second Wednesday of the month.
So we can change it, right, Polly? I mean, we can modify it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Your program.
And a lot of times, like, you know, so maybe the second Wednesday ends up being Veterans Day. Or, you know, there might be a reason why we need to swish, switch the regular meeting. So, um, but yes, absolutely, you can change it. Uh, and you do have to have a meeting at least monthly. You can have more, you can have special meetings. But even if you don't really have much on your agenda, you still do have to have a meeting at least once a month. And it's not, it's not specific that it has to be every thirty days or within a calendar month. But generally, I think it's viewed as once every calendar month. Okay, next one. Um, I always like to mention the public comment, um, and I think the public gets confused by this, you know, a town council meeting seems a lot less intimidating than, let's say, the state legislature. But there is the similarity that, like, you can go down to the Capitol, um, starting next week when they're in session and watch the legislators vote and argue and do whatever on bills, but you don't get to speak. Um, and it's the same thing for your meetings, is the public allowed to attend? A public meeting means the public can come, they can listen, but there, there's no requirement to allow, to require the public to s- comment unless it's a public hearing. Um, and so, you know, different councils take different positions on that. Um, sometime, you know, in a small town, if someone wants to comment on something, even if it's not a public hearings, sometimes um, it's up to the mayor to allow that or the council, but, um, it's not required. And a lot of times, you know, we, every council has that public comment, um, portion at the beginning, um. Those things can be raised, but you can't take a final action on it. So let's say someone raises the idea. I think actually, I remember one year, someone was coming around, they wanted to do life-size chess, um, sets. Like, every, like, in every town. I went to a couple of different meetings and they had this great idea or interesting idea and it was, you know, life-size games. And so, if you heard that from the public, you could say, well, we're interested. We'll put it on the next agenda to discuss. Or, but you couldn't say at that meeting, yes, let's do that. We're gonna spend five hundred dollars to allow for that because it wasn't on the agenda to begin with. Okay, next one. Um, all your meetings are recorded. Um, all your meetings, uh, are required to have minutes. Uh, the minutes are the official record of the meeting, um, and, um, they have to be, and actually, I think I need to update this. I think that they ha- oh, no, they have to be available. The draft minutes have to be done within thirty days. And then they have to be posted within three days of their approval. Um, and recordings have to be available within three business days. I feel like it's gotten a lot easier now that so much is on Zoom or YouTube. They're basically up there instantaneously. Um, site visits do not require recording. Um, because you're not on site, but anything that happens in the regular meeting or at your meeting site is required to be recorded. And even closed session, um, has to be recorded except for there are a few certain exceptions for, um, personnel and, um, I think security. But there, and there's a process to go through if you, uh, don't have a recording. And as Jen pointed out, we were discussing, it's required that once you start the recording, it goes through the entire session until you adjourn.
Hey, your question about the last slide.
Sure.
The final action, uh, if you're tackling something that's not on the agenda, it's all the way at the bottom, I think, of that page. Yeah, so, you know, I was, I was spending some time in the use LCT book. And one of the things that it said a couple of times was that any, uh, member can make a motion at any time during the meeting. Um, which is an interesting idea just in its own right. But i- if, if, say something came up that we wanted to deal with, eh, we make a mo- somebody could make a motion for it, but we can't pass that? Is the, is it the passing of it that's the final action? Or it sort of depends on each example, or am I making any sense to anyone?
Yeah, I, I think I know what you're referring to. So it's, you can have a discussion, but you can't have that final vote. You can't implement anything.
You can propose, uh, 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 cause this kind of ties to our whole thing about, you know, I was trying to get better about giving our direction of via ordinance and resolution as part of the whole switch to the, um, away from the ma- you know, strong mayor form of government, um. And, and so, you know, I'm just trying to like think through the mechanics of how we actually do that. And so if an issue came up, I'm so good.
Oh, I was gonna say, most of the time, in the past, on past councils, when you're about to discuss a topic, sometimes you'll make a motion and somebody will second it and then the discussion will happen. And so I think that's what they're referring to, but you just can't vote on it until it's been on the agenda.
Well, we couldn't actually pass the resolution, even if everyone was in agreement.
Yeah, if it's not on the agenda.
If it's not on the agenda, right? Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
It seems so far away from like a phone call saying, hey, this is the direction, this is what we think. Right? Because by definition, it would be like a forty-day process or something.
Well, and I mean, I guess there is a bit of a gray area. So let's say, using the life-size chess set as an example, let's say that person came in and the council kind of gave a head nod and said, hey, we're interested in this. You know, Chris, can you please, um, could you please look into this more and give that direction to staff? I wouldn't view that as a final action. But the decision to spend five hundred dollars to implement it or to allocate public space to this project would have to be on another agenda. And you could have, you know, a bit of a discussion of it at the meeting, even though it was on the agenda, because then at the next meeting where you're actually, where it is agendized, you, or whatever meeting it is, people, you could, you could include the minutes where you have the discussion. So the public could see kind of the history of it, instead of just, you know, it coming out of nowhere.
And there'd probably be a draft ordinance too, right? Or a draft, uh, solution.
Revolution.
People can also look at touch field.
Right.
Hold.
I, I think sometimes you see public bodies, you know, adopt the resolution celebrating somebody or, 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 you know, somebody will introduce a motion to say happy birthday. Or celebrate Flag Day or something like that. And I don't know that there's necessarily anything wrong with that. Polly, it goes in minutes.
But it's not substantive.
Effect, yeah, it's advocacy versus.
So is this whole discussion still under the umbrella of the Open Public Meetings Act?
Yeah.
Are these things that we're talking about now that are not taking final action? Is that, are we still under the umbrella of the Open Public Meeting Act?
Absolutely, yeah. But, um, Chris, like, you're, so anytime I've ever seen a resolution that, you know, congratulates somebody for their years of service or, uh, for dealing with sixteen interlodges over a season. Hopefully not, or whatever else. Those are almost always pre-planned, right? Like, they're on, we, we've decided to do that over twenty-four hours beforehand and they're, they're on the agenda. So you wouldn't have, you know, you could have the whole council be like, great job, um, town marshal for how you're dealing with the snow or thank you plow drivers. But if you're gonna have an actual resolution, that would be on the agenda. That makes sense. And I think, you know, this final action is tied, that's a great question. Um, Council Member Byrne, is that, you know, that final action is part of what makes, you know, of that decision of, is this something that has to be on the agenda? Is this within, you know, something that, um, the pu- the public needs to be noticed on. So that's a great, uh, thing to point out. Um, and then you can have emergency meetings if something comes up. But it's very rare. I'm trying to think if we've ever even, the closest I think we've had one was maybe during COVID, there was, I think we might have had one. But, um, you know, I could see if there was, you know, an emergency situation or something comes up, you are allowed to have an emergency meeting. So, um, hmm, there's not much to say about that. Next one. And then just in conclusion, if you knowingly or intentionally violate the Open Public Meetings Act, it is a class B misdemeanor. And then at the end here is that link to the, um, Open Public Meetings Act training on the auditor's office. And I would expect that after today's meeting, you are, today's presentation, you would ace it. This is pretty, you know, these are the main concepts, so, but you're not required to take it, so.
You notice that our, um, special meetings provision conflicts, actually, with what we were just talking about, she was saying the majority of the councils required to call a special meeting where ours is any two or the mayor. And then, uh, rule one be.
Right. Oh.
Just something for the list of updates for this, I guess.
Yeah, I'll update, I'll take a look at that. And yeah, I was just looking over the rules of procedure and order, which I know, um, state law requires us to have and it's always good to have, um, and some just things I thought would be helpful to point out is, um, the minimum number of votes required to pass any actions is three. So even if you had just three of you at a meeting, which is a quorum, you could have a meeting to pass anything at that meeting, all three council members would have to vote for, in favor of it, or against, or in favor of it, um. And roll call vote is required for all, um, resolutions and ordinances. So, e- even though it can feel tedious, that's, that is required, um. And council, and then under this, two council members must vote if they are present unless they are recused for conflict of interest, so.
Where does that, where does that come from?
You know, I, that is in part, I mean, it's a policy decision to require that or not, but.
That's in ours, but not in the state one.
Exactly. And I can tell you that part of the reason why I've thought about it is because I was, one time I was attending a meeting and it was a hard decision. And one, it was a planning commission meeting. And one of the planning commissioners was just like, I can't decide. I can see, you know, and he didn't vote. He just was like, I don't wanna vote. And, you know, that's why it's a policy decision. Do you wanna allow people to just say, you know, I'm throwing up my hands, or is part of your duty as an elected official to make a decision on those hard questions?
We, we've had people abstain though, right?
Well, that's what's good, yeah, question is, if somebody like, it most frequently happens in meeting minutes. If somebody wasn't in a meet, the previous meeting, they'll say I'm staying from voting on those minutes because I wasn't there.
Right.
But I.
But I think it conflicts, it conflicts with this though. That's, that's where my question was too, is we've traditionally allowed people to abstain. And sometimes it's just like, you feel like it's the right thing to do. To me, that would be on the list of things that I would say we should abandon.
Okay.
And allow people to abstain.
For any reason or for specific reasons?
I could, I was gonna say, we, I remember we were passing the, um, with the, the corridor here, the big planning thing for the corridor that we did a long time ago. We had some town council members abstain from that and that was, and some of them would just state, hey, I don't, so I don't know enough about the topic. Or I, and that's what we've done in the past. Moving forward, we could, we might wanna.
I don't think you should have to give a reason, honestly. Well, sometimes the reasons are personal.
Yeah, right.
So I would be up for allowing people to abstain by choice, if, if at some point we're gonna change this thing.
Sounds like we're gonna need to and we'll have a discussion.
Polly tried to let us into it. I don't know.
Whoops. No, I'd rather.
Be on it, right?
Um, okay, so we can, we can look at those things. And it's good to come back and revisit your rules of procedure every couple of years to make sure that it fits the council that you have and, and what your wants and needs are. The last thing that I did also notice is, um, that you shall elect, uh, a mayor pro tem. And I don't, I haven't been, did you guys, are you doing that?
I thought we did, well, we did.
We have a new council.
Slave.
Yeah, you should do it at least annually.
At least annually.
Well, at least every two years.
At least every two years, I should say, right? Every time you have a new composition. Right? It's appropriate to redo it.
Guess that should go on next agenda.
Right, because we couldn't just do it now, because.
We can't do it now.
Right.
No, you can't do it now. It's not on the agenda.
Well, that's not on the agenda, so we can't do it.
Till next meeting.
Yeah, so let's get on the next meeting.
Polly, is, because we have a new council, is, we, do we still have a mayor pro tem? Or would, does the new council kind of make it so you don't have one until you vote on it?
No, I think unless the one, unless the mayor pro tem is one of the members that's no longer on there, I think that you would have the existing person would continue until someone else is elected. Or, yeah.
Moving into item number four.
Well. We moved into it unofficially, but I think we should officially have that discussion.
Well, I'm not sure, Polly, you finished.
No, I've done, unless you have any other questions. And also I'd like to welcome your new council member, um, so. Um, congratulations and congratulations for reelection and thank you all for your service. It's, you know, I, I strongly believe that, you know, the way life, you know, real change can happen at the local level and that's where it really starts. So, I really appreciate the time. I know it takes a lot of time and dedication, um, to do this work. And so really appreciate what, you know, the efforts you guys make and the attention you make to the town.
Thanks, Pauline.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thanks.
Um. Okay, shall we move? Oh, uh, one, one follow-up for this. Uh, Dan, do you have a account, an email account?
Um, I, I just got one. I put in twenty-four hours, which will have set up by tomorrow, I should, anyway.
Good, that's, that's all I wanna know. All right, let's move on to, um, item four, rules and review of the rules and procedures in order for the town.
Go to Alpha Town Council by Jen.
So, as Polly just demonstrated, I think, you know, this, this really goes hand in hand with the OMA training. And, um, I just felt like, eh, you know, that we should be reviewing these sort of, um, documents on a regular basis. And also we have a new council, so for Dan's benefit and for everybody else's, it's a great reminder to review what we have on the books. And then if the council wants to direct staff to take another look at these, this is a great opportunity to, to have that. So, um, I did send out, um, the rules and procedures. These current ones that we have were adopted back in November of twenty twenty-two via resolution. And I'm just gonna assume that you've all read them. Polly also highlighted a few key things. I was just gonna highlight a few key things, um, and then allow the council to, um, ask questions or give feedback. So, the things I wanna mention are that, um, we typically set the meeting schedule in June. That being said, if the council needs to change the meeting structure, time, anything like that, that you could bring that up to staff and we can revisit that. Um, but we, once a year, typically set a meeting schedule for the public in the air in advance and post that on the town's website so that the public is aware of what that schedule is. Um, the agenda for, um, council meetings. So, um, the mayor sets officially. Um the mayor sets officially sets the agenda, but if any two council members wanna get something on the agenda. They can um let the clerk or the mayor, town manager know within ten days before the council meeting, if they would like to get something on the agenda, so. I'd just like to let you guys know of what those um opportunities are. Uh Polly reviewed the quorum stuff, so I'm gonna kind of. Skip over that for now, but again, the quorum of three, even if there's only three members at the. At a meeting, you still have to have three to have a vote. Um I have one thing that I've been doing as of late. In our records is um, because we passed so many resolutions, ordinances and things like that. With the roll call vote, and because this tells me that it's a yes or no vote. Um in rule four D, I have added a section to the bottom of all of our resolutions and ordinances, which basically records how everybody votes. And then you just, it's, to me, it's just simpler and nicer and cleaner um to see instead of like this person, and it's in. Paragraph form, this list form, I think, is just great, and then you don't actually have to go back to the minutes either, so before you'd seen it was approved. But you'd have to go back to the minutes to see how people voted, so that's just a little tweak that um we did in the office. Um and then the. I, I wanted to bring up the extension thing, so I'm glad we kind of had a brief discussion about that um earlier. For me, as the town clerk, managing these meetings is very, very helpful when you let me know. Your um. Attendance at meetings, um and so it seems like I um, sometimes I get last minute things. That happens, that's great, always if something changes in your schedule, please let me know as soon as you know, but, you know. I'm managing all five of, of you, and, and I may know something that you don't know, so we may be on the bridge of like a. Quorum to hold the meeting, and so it's just, I just wanna let you know, it's. It's something that I really track and is very important and helpful to me in my role if you guys just let me know, um and even if it's. Um your attendance is online versus in person, it's just helpful, so thanks for, for doing that um. And that's it, I guess I'll let you. Bring up anything about this resolution that you'd like to discuss, or?
I had a few thoughts, we could take a minute. Anybody else?
I'm fine.
You know, that, that um. That last. That last point you made was um actually one of the comments I was gonna have. I uh, I have no problem staying in touch with you or letting you know, I worry a little bit that this is pretty arbitrary in saying it's seven days before. Seven days before your plan could be attended person, something comes up, it changes. I just wouldn't want the council members to be in violation of an ordinance. Um so I would suggest that we sort of make this a little less um.
So, more soft.
Yeah, softer, like we'll make our best, our best efforts.
It's also a class B misdemeanor to text.
Oh, so this isn't part of an ordinance.
No, this is the resolution.
Oh, that's great, I didn't know that. There you go, oh, and so we could amend it because it's on the, on the agenda.
I'll take feedback and we can present something.
So one of my concerns was that we should sort of try to eliminate things that could be potential, like serious. Legal pitfalls for people, there's a couple of them in here.
So preferably or something like that?
Yeah, best effort.
I think the reason why we passed that was that we just. We wanted to make sure we had a quorum, because sometime, and I think it's not, it's not ne- necessarily whether you're gonna attend in person or remotely, if you're not gonna attend the meeting at all. Is why we had that seven days thing in there, because then we could decide if we needed to reschedule a meeting.
Yeah.
And so that was like one reason why I remember we had that discussion about putting it in there.
And if, if we only had saving changes to like three, if I only knew three days before, that's gonna add a lot more. Dynamic to try to reschedule and.
So we can definitely stop in it, because there could be emergencies where you can't attend, or.
Yeah, I guess, you know, it says pursuant to Utah code, it's, I guess where I thought that, you know, somehow I might be. You know, inadvertently committing some kind of a misdemeanor crime, and I, I think that would be a, a, a challenge. I, I will say, I just had a couple of quick comments up above, I'll try to blow through these. The special meeting thing I think is fine, uh. Three hour notice, I think we should change that. You really wanna be able to have a special meeting and only three hours notice? Or that we're all expected to respond in three hours, that seems.
I can imagine that there are occasions in which they may want us to be able to do that, and, and if it's. Phrased positively, not, I didn't even touch you, sorry, John, if it's phrased positively, not negatively, I think it's a good thing, because. Like what happens if there's like a sudden disaster, like we are closed, we have a fire. Covid comes again, or whatever weird pandemic, so I, I kind of liked that, that we can be called.
And I think that's the intent, Caroline, I think you're, you're capturing it, and it does say at least, but.
Okay, um, I, I'm not married to any of these comments really, I just, these were things I think worthy of discussion.
I was just gonna remark that, you know, if we are gonna redo this, you know, we could distinguish between a special meeting. And an emergency meeting, and in my mind, those are two different things. So a special meeting is because you need to take, you need to have a second meeting during the month, because something. Is happening, whatever workload or whatever it may be, an emergency meeting is that three hours where it's like. Whoa, something's happening and we need to get together so that we can. Pass legislation.
Some action or something, yeah.
So to me, that's that distinction.
Moving on to rule two.
That's a good, that's a good point.
Yes, there's some provision against, uh instead of having a fixed number and use the term as soon as practical. I mean, that of course leaves everybody a bit in jeopardy, but on the other hand, our circumstances are such that stuff can come up. And uh, you know, blow the hell out of the, the schedule. And uh, you know, you, again, we don't wanna be in violation because. We didn't have the end number of days uh to make this change.
So the state law for the emergency meetings that is just, must give best notice practable, practicable. As to the time and place of the emergency meeting, as well as what will be, as well as the topics to be considered there. And you must attempt to notify all members of the body.
And then for the special meeting, you could use like twenty-four hours notice or something, because then you could notice it.
Yeah, then you need to just follow the regular um laws for a special meeting, and that's the distinction is that. And um is that according to state law, you need a majority of the body to hold an emergency meeting. But a special meeting is, we were, under our. Requirements is just either two, or the mayor says that we need to have one. So a special meeting is just kind of an additional meeting, it has to happen at least twenty-four hours before, so that the town clerk can. Notify everyone.
So is that the way it works, because our code says what it says, that the state saying that it has to be a majority? One of those slides a minute ago said it had to be a majority.
For an emergency meeting.
Oh, for emergency meeting.
But a special meeting, so that's the distinction.
Is a work session still a special meeting, Polly? Or a special meetings works, okay, they're the same?
They're the same, so, and that took me a lo-. A long time to understand the different terms, right, a work session, um business meeting. Uh the, the only thing about those is that they tend to be less formal, and they tend to be um. They're to kind of work through things, right, have it, you know, a lot of times. A council may for a work session sit at a round table and actually, so that there's more dialogue. And the public you often isn't allowed to make comment, or sometimes they are. Whereas the regular meeting, everyone's at the dais. So, you know, to me, that's the distinction, and then the other one, executive session is usually referring to. A closed session is another term for a closed session. So, so a work meeting has to have all this thing, so for example, your. Uh retreat tomorrow is basically an all day work meeting. And that had to be noticed with an agenda, uh it has to be recorded, there're gonna be minutes for it. So, just because it's more informal work meeting, it still has to meet those Open Public Meeting Act requirements.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem with those kinds of things, I'm, I just don't wanna get us in a bind where. I, I mean, we are susceptible to some emergency situations here. And uh, you know, I don't wanna be, I don't want us to be constrained by a uh. A rigid uh kind of resolution to not do the right thing. So I, but I don't know what the words are, I'll go with that.
Well, I think we're just, we're, I think we're gonna stop before trying to wordsmith these changes, we're just gonna make a way to. Changes, but that seems like one, a good one.
So what I'm hearing so far is um calling out emergency meetings versus special meetings and the twenty-four hours versus the, I think it was like. Reasonable or something, some language like that for the timing for the. Save versus the twenty-four hours for the special meetings is what I heard.
Right, swapping out the three hours for something a little um less precise.
So we can wordsmith that.
And then in.
Sorry, can I ask a question? Do we know if historically there has been um. A, a need for a gathering of the council emergently to make some decision?
Don't think we had emergency council meetings during covid until it was time to ratify, um you know, emergency powers.
Okay.
We had one emergency meeting where something happened with a truck, and we had to do something within, it was within twenty-four hours.
Okay.
And it was like we had a five minute emergency.
But even with snowmogato last year, we were. Okay.
Yeah.
So it's a theoretical question. Right.
Well, and all of this should be really under the umbrella of, you know, the now town manager centric. Governments, I mean, I think a lot of these things for me, like, made sense in the old mayor's, uh strong mayor format. But in the new format with the empowered town manager, I think that's where a few of these changes come from, for me.
Good point.
I think Zoom has made it different too, I mean, we used to have to conduct emergency meetings and give notice, and we all had to be able to show up. And now it's easier, you know, you could get on Zoom, you can have an emergency meeting on Zoom, as long as you notice the public, so it's just a little different now.
In the nitpick category, number two, I guess it's a nitpick. Um. Yeah, I, I just, it moves along, the um. Yeah, the agenda by, so I just maybe play some agenda by either the mayor or. Within ten days notice by any two council members, I'd like to see us delete the words uh or within ten days. So that it was just the same. So you're setting of our high, so it would read either by the mayor or any two council members.
So the reason I think the ten days is in here is to help give you instruction, because we are producing the, the packet. And so the agenda is really kind of like, we're internally formalizing the agenda ten days in advance, and so if you're to ask me like the day before. Like we, I think we need some guidance here, um and that's the reason is because of the timing of preparing materials for the council to review. That's why that ten days is there. Does that make a difference to you?
Maybe, I mean, I think that it, it could, and it's probably another one of these circumstantial things, um. You know, I think, I think the thing for me is. If I, I think, I'm hearing Chris say. That he is hoping that we follow through with the idea that we're gonna provide most of our guidance going forward through ordinance and resolution. And so I think we need to be thinking about, you know, how that process is actually gonna be, and that's where the ten days. Where I think, you know, if it's something we feel strongly enough about to pass a resolution to council members, how many of these have there ever been? There's been no council induced. Items since I've been working here, I mean, they're not gonna be.
My recollection, there have been where the, where council has asked, and, and again, it's just, it's so that, if you want something. Then staff needs to be able to produce it and the agenda, and it's the timing, we need to be able to like have all that stuff. A week in advance so that it's posted and done and.
Well, the problem is then that puts us out of sync with the cycle of you getting us the material, I mean, I think we should.
No, this keeps you in sync.
This is, this is.
This helps you give us information in a time that allows us to deliver to, to the council.
I think the idea.
Right, but we don't get this month's material from you till after the ten day deadline is passed, we get this month's. Material from you.
Right. Yes.
Right, so see, that's, that's kind of where I'm getting hung up, because like we don't see this month's thing, so we don't make the ten days, and so then there is something on the agenda. That would spark two council members to have some kind of.
But the idea is that. You have a process that we follow, so like, even if you have an idea that you wanna talk about something on the agenda. During that meeting, you would have that discussion that maybe we would move this down to the next meeting, so that you could then put something on the next agenda, it just allows it to be a more timely. And the proper amount of time given to it, before this was drafted, I, we didn't have the two town councils putting something on the agenda, it used to just be the mayor.
Right.
And so when we, I will tell you the whole dog, dog ordinance, dog stuff was the what prompted allowing two town council members to put something on the agenda, and. We specifically requested the ten days so that the staff could prepare, and we don't want twenty-four hours before a meeting, two town council members to go to. Jen and Chris and say, we want this on the agenda.
I, I, I don't live on anything twenty-four hours. I like to actually have a chance to read the stuff.
Yeah, and the other idea was too, is we didn't want two town council members to be able to blindside the rest of the council with putting something on the agenda, and the other town council members didn't have. Time to catch up and study with what those two town council members are gonna propose, and so that's what that ten day requirement kind of came from. Um it just gave everyone time to, we didn't want something to suddenly get put on the agenda that was a surprise to other people. So that's kind of where it came from.
Yeah, I hear you, and I think that's, that's good thinking and, and logical, how about we just leave it that we should revisit the ten? The, the number ten, like if you don't wanna just do away with this, I see a certain symmetry in saying, listen. Either the mayor or two members can put something on the agenda, and I think whatever timeline that is, should be the same for both of them. Is that, is that a better way to say it?
That's what this is. The mayor also is like not.
Has a ten day.
It's, it's.
Theoretical.
Yes, in working practice, I'm approving the agenda with the mayor ten days out. And then we're doing our internal processes and everything, so it's, this is really just trying to get the council. On the same pattern as, as the staff and the mayor.
Yeah, and I'm only suggesting that I think it's important going forward that the council have sort of an equal access. Um to put items on the agenda, and so if, if you're saying you're, you're shooting for that with the mayor too. Then, then that's great, and, and maybe we should try to make it all five days or seven days instead of ten, but. We can leave that for another day, maybe ten's the right number, I don't know.
Well, I wonder, is that you could also, council member could ask the mayor to put it on the agenda. And usually, unless it's something contentious like dogs, where maybe a mayor says I've had enough of the dogs.
Yeah, but this is supposed to be sort of a check and balance in a way, um an independent right, you know, so I think there could be things that the ma-. You knew the mayor would be opposed to, so. I don't know, I thi- I think the two council members or the mayor is a good thing, but. All right, so we, so let's move on to the next thing, so then the only other issues I had were in rule eight. Which are um kind of these, um like, A doesn't bother me too much, as we'll treat each other with respect and act in a civil manner. I think that's already covered under the ethical requirements uh pledges, but. I don't mind saying the same thing again, um public remarks must not be personal, pertaining slanderous. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. A time limit may be established for public comments that are addressed to council on any item, even if it's not on the agenda. Um, I guess I think about Mike Mon's comments, aren't his comments a public comment?
Uh he is specifically on the agenda, and the reason for that is because.
You wanna exempt him.
For, and I think the council wants to hear from him for more than three minutes.
So my question here was, does everybody have to have the same time limit? If you're gonna have ten public comments today. Everybody would, but you get around that for mics because you put him on the agenda.
He's specifically presenting to the council, and yet everybody else should be treated the same, all of the public, and kept to like. Our rule of thumb has been three minutes. And we don't always remind everybody of that at the beginning, we try and so. We try our best to work through that and not. If somebody's wrapping up, I don't cut them off, but if I can tell they're gonna keep going on and on without me, then yes, I have cut people off, but I don't, I'm doing it.
Can I ask a question about that, Jen?
Yes.
I, cuz I, I think in the spirit of what John brought up, I, I think it's not so much established, which, which.
I, cause I, I think in the spirit of what John brought up, I, I think it's not so much established, which, which implies it's, it's, it's pre uh, you know, the comment, I think it may be imposed, where the, the mayor or the council is now can impose upon the commenter, hey, we're gonna give you this much more time, but in the interest of the public and the council and the, and the professional staff's time moving things forward, we may not allow you to keep on going. So to me, that's, that's a different word, you know, we may impose that upon them during their commentary period. Uh, and Polly, I don't know if that makes a difference to you versus established, which is, you know
Well, say on every one of our, on our agendas, at the top of the agenda, you know, it says to take a public comment, we make, you know, we try and give people guidelines for making public comments. Maybe I'm not necessarily answering your question, but we do say on the agenda, please know each person will be able to speak for three minutes once in our public, so we're trying to give that direction to everybody. Um, I don't know that I answered, I don't know that I fully understood your comment, to be perfectly honest. I'm sorry, Dan.
Well, I, it was just that, you know, because this is, what this really is, is uh, it's a resolution for procedure, I, I just felt like in the spirit of what John was saying, the town has the ability to apply our procedure to you, the public commentator, that we may impose upon you a limit, which is different than it's establishment advance, you have three minutes. I don't know. Maybe, maybe it's a, a, a hair splitting.
But, but I think they nodded their head when, when they asked, does it have to be the same limit for all public presenters?
Yeah, that's The issue with that is it becomes a free speech issue. If, if, if the council or the mayor or somebody is limiting the amount of time for one person based on their particular viewpoint or their standpoint, well, then we run into First Amendment problem, so if there's a public comment period, it really has two, two purposes. One, it's meant to prevent sort of a public filibuster on a constitutional topic where they can just take up the entire time, and we've seen that in the last year. And so you want that three or that whatever time limit to stop that, and then you also want to just treat everyone equally so that you're not accused of selectively allowing one viewpoint more time than another.
That was really what my, my chicken scratch was, was ask if it, if it needs to be applied uniformly.
Yeah, and there's nothing to prevent, you know, if somebody is discussing and bringing something up, there's nothing to prevent the council from following up and asking questions and having a discussion, but as a blanket rule, you wanna have the same time uh for everybody.
That's my thought is, it gives that, it gives that person the opportunity to address their issue or have their, you know, have their time, and it, it gives the council and the mayor the opportunity to move things forward and then say, we will come back to you, so we're not gonna limit your free speech. But my thought was the filibuster spirit, actually, so.
In these next two, it's the uh, it says the council will, council respond to staff communication within forty-eight hours. Uh, yeah. Um, and then it, you know, some, some, that's hard. Can we make it some other, can we make it less precise? Can we just say you'll respond in a timely manner or something? I mean, not everything you send am I really ready to respond in forty-eight hours, you know?
Yeah. I, I mean, I read that
We use our best effort.
That's a great guy, that's a great guidance.
Those are the things you send
Driving for this, but like, yeah.
But if you're gonna deep dive into this thing or something, you know, I'm not sure I'm gonna get it
Well, most of them require a response from us. Most of the time you're just sending us information, and if you're specifically asking a question, that might be different, but I think you're just sending us
Maybe Chris and I can talk about that, and when we suggest a revision, we can suggest something for that.
And then, you know, I think the same sort of best efforts approach to E as well would be great, and that would be the end of my comments here, but uh, that, that will, that's the uh, we'll notify you at least seven days in advance of whether we're attending electronically or in person, and that, you know, some sort of a best efforts, stay in touch, communicate, just a little less precise would be good for me. So the same reason
Yeah, sure, because sometimes you think, you think you're gonna be there, but
Something changes.
The intent of this is if you have a known vacation, please tell me.
Yeah.
If you have a known travel, emergencies happen, situations happen on a day-to-day basis. You guys are very good at letting me know when stuff comes up. This is you know, really intended towards like, let me know your schedule, and if you, if you know you're not gonna be at a meeting, please, you know, let me know within your time.
Yeah, I think we have good communication on that thing. I feel like I have good communication with you on that stuff.
Yeah, you told us six months in advance.
I'm just so retentive, I hate to be not, you know, lined up with these things, so it's a, you know, yeah.
Yeah, but you know, to me, we have to have a degree of flexibility in these things, and so uh, words that are somewhat softer. Imagine I was lying down here for this meeting and the uh, door parking my seven thirty-seven part of the airplane. And my schedule was revised.
As soon as po- there is soft language in here, I will point out.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
It is, it is in the way it is written. There's soft language.
I know their comments on this.
Does the council wanna see something on like the February agenda for this, the March agenda? What do we think?
What's, what's been on the February?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it applies to how we do meetings, so it should be.
This is, th- this is in place until we change it.
Yep.
Yeah.
But, and Polly, it seemed like picked up on those first couple of things, maybe been out of sync, think of this, same with this law, they're probably the most important ones.
Okay, we will do that. Uh, that was, took a little longer than I expected, I'm sorry, but thank you, important stuff.
Okay, let's move on uh to the Mike Mon sphere, and you'll notice that Mike Mon is not here. And in fact, I have a communication from Mike Mon that says this came in yesterday after the evening, actually. Roger, I'm in Canada and I'm on fourteen eighty, that will not be participating tomorrow due to due to opening a week later than our target opening date, and it's no conditions uh gear business up to the Christmas, up to Christmas, we're trailing last season. Sunshine coupled with having the best conditions in the state of Utah resulted in um busier than normal period between Christmas and New Year. While we have not caught, while we have not caught last season's gear business number, we are now only trailing last season by a few percentage points. We're continuing to gather data about state Route Two Ten traffic congestion issues and changes that could reduce congestion. Is it possible to have a work session or open community forum where we can present our findings and take feedback from the help community, and I'll address that later. It may also be time for the opportunity to send a letter to Snowbird, refreshing they do a better job of managing traffic. It was unacceptable having roadside parking on both sides of the state highway from entry one down to white line last Saturday. And there was a red snake till after, well after eight o'clock. Um, if Snowbird doesn't respond favorably, a community letter to the Forest Service, Utah, and Salt Lake County requesting their help may be warranted. We captured video footage and drone footage of the situation last Saturday, which would be interesting. We requested proposal from DHA Avalanche Safety to explore alternatives for reducing or mitigating the avalanche risk on the main line with the intent we can open more. Well, we do, do you have any other suggestions?
Can I make a comment, or is that, or am I not allowed to?
Oh, you're allowed.
Okay, uh, you know, in my uh, learning in the last meeting that the buses are significantly less than they were. I was driving down the canyon a couple of days ago, and I was absolutely terrified, and it made me think about how have they also stopped plowing the road as much? And it's all like some giant conspiracy, so we all vote for the gondola. Um, is there any um data out there that suggests that the, that they have stopped conditioning the road as much as they previously had? No, I just happened to drive down at a weird time.
I think that the last couple of red snake, the last, the two red snakes we've had have been like snow intensity and our plows just getting stuck in the traffic. And then it snows so hard that they can't keep up with it.
And tha- and that's kind of what happened. There was a plow, a- a- anyway, I, I, it it just made me think, because there wasn't really that much snow on the ground, but the condition of the road was just terrifying.
They were probably right behind you, unfortunately.
Yeah, on Friday, I know our marshals escorted a plow down through town around the traffic and, but you can only do so much, right?
Want to say anything about that, Mike?
Uh, you know, our friends in Utah have been throwing everything they can at it. We've had times where we've had three trucks in the canyon simultaneously. As you said, Polly said, if they're not moving, you know, they're not being effective. And, you know, one of the big issues that they have is the mixture of salt and sand that they put onto the highway has to be driven in for it to be effective, so if you just spray it and there's no movement on top of it, um, really what happens is the salt melts the snow, the running water turns to ice, and, and then we're worse shape.
Yeah, it was this
Yeah, so we, we need movement on top of their plowing efforts.
There's actually, if you go onto the traffic website and you click on the cameras, there's uh Google Maps that comes up, and with all the camera locations, you can actually turn on the plows and you can watch them in the canyon. And on Saturday or Sunday, I can't remember what day it was, I watched like two or three move up and down the canyon all day.
So we saw largely that um vehicles were in compliance with the traction law. Um, we also saw there was a lot of destination visitors. Probably a lot of people that are driven to ten for the first time in their lives, and, and our experience tells us they don't like not knowing what's around the next turn, and they're very hesitant drivers, and when you get behind them, you know, the whole line suffers.
Yeah.
And I would, I would expect we'll see more of those visitors over this uh, part of the town weekend.
Well, you know, a factor in that might have been that uh we not only had the best snow in Utah, we had the best snow in the west. And people came here who were not familiar, and uh, that, that contributes to the kind of phenomenon that Mike is talking about.
With two million of those icon passes out there, all we have to do is one percent of them come.
Yeah.
And erects our, our world. We only uh
We're just, thanks, nine five, nine five, uh, Mike Mon, um, cool. Uh, so let's go to questions regarding department reports.
I had a couple of quick comments on Chris's, um. I noticed the date was wrong, but um when you're saying shovel-ready in twenty-four, I'm thinking that means fiscal twenty-four, and that, so I just, but you mean calendar twenty-four.
Yeah, like this building season, the upcoming building season, which is
Really a twenty-five event, right? Cool, just wanted to understand that, and uh good luck on purging the uh files. It's interesting, you know, I, I hate throwing things away, and uh it's funny, all that blackjack stuff, it's been pretty interesting reading all of the, I mean, it's cool we still have that stuff.
Yeah, oh, I, I, all the bill, the plans are an asset.
Development agreements?
Yeah, development agreements, they, they, it's kind of handy. Um, but they take up, you know, a huge amount of valuable space and um, unless we throw them away, they're gonna take up more space than we have to give, and so, you know, probably as we now know that was, you're, you're gonna need in the future. Yeah. I, I think our plan is, is to throw out the things we statutorily don't need to hold on to, and probably don't add any value anymore, and then archive the rest in state archives for low cost, no cost, so that they can be pulled back if we need it in the future.
I mean, and the other thing, I mean, if they're so valuable too, you don't, like, it's better to have them in a place that's a little more secure and safe in case there's a fire or in case
Right.
Right, so
Yeah.
That's always really important.
Okay, uh, with respect to
Out to, uh, one of the the uh administrative code enforcement, this is in Chris's, and Chris is basically uh uh supporting administrative code enforcement or saying, hey, she will be going ahead with this.
Yeah, the idea here was to preview that, um, but you remind you that we, you know, spent several meetings discussing this, and um we, we kind of lost the thread a little bit after the November meeting, I think it was, although it had been the October meeting. And um, rather than just plop it on an agenda um with an action item, I wanted to give you a preview that we'd like to take the discussion back up in February. Um, a- a- and I think that what we wanted to explain to you in advance of that meeting was that we don't think it makes sense to spend the time and the legal fees to develop that comprehensive, you know, fourteen or fifteen, I, I don't remember how many titles we have in the town code, it's fourteen or fifteen or so. Um, you know, an inventory of, of all of the, all the ordinances in the code, you know, with a, you know, an X-axis that shows the enforcement types. So, you know, we talked about doing that, but we don't think it's necessary. Um, so if you have comments on that, we're happy to hear them, but otherwise, I think we, we plan to um put it on the February agenda and provide some other more summary exhibits.
And so just select areas that you think that the civil code enforcement would be infor- it would be appropriate.
Uh, sure, we can provide recommendations, but I think Cameron, if you wanna speak to the, the higher level approach we were considering, which was to essentially provide the town the option to enforce uh, any ordinance civilly?
Yeah, so, so state law limits some things that we cannot use civil code enforcement on. For example, moving traffic violations, we cannot use civil code enforcement to enforce that. We cannot use civil code enforcement for uh person or property crimes that are felonies. The only misdemeanors are below, class B misdemeanors are below. But essentially what, what most municipalities have is they have three um options to use as enforcement. So criminal is sort of the heaviest uh, option. It's, you know, the hammer, it carries potential jail and prison sentences, it carries a criminal history. Um, middle of the road is code enforcement, because the fines are limited, the types of, of offenses are only up to a misdemeanor type of offense, uh, and it has to be advised by the town ordinance. And sort of on the wet noodle side of things, or, or the weakest side of things, is the administrative enforcement, which would be suspending or revoking a permit or something of that, a license or something of that nature. And so by having all three options, we feel like that would give the town the best ability to respond as appropriate. And so that's why we, in, in the discussions with staff and, and with the comments that the council have made previously, we didn't really wanna sit down and, and do a table that listed all of those out. We simply want to be able to have, we, we wanna recommend that the town have the ability to have civil code enforcement for any town ordinance that is a misdemeanor or below when compared to the criminal offense. But, but the civil code enforcement would be for any town ordinance violation, so operating a business without a license, trespassing, uh, interlodge violation, uh, parking violations. Yeah, they would run the gamut, right? But it's kind of the middle of the road, it doesn't carry the heavy hammer of the criminal sentencing and fines. But it also is a little more effective and serious than just an administrative action.
I had some issues with this one when it was first brought up, and uh, uh, I just ran out of bandwidth. Um, I've had time to actually deep dive and do a bunch of extra reading on this, and I think the material that they sent us, we probably should have adopted a couple of months ago, and I just wanna be what to say that I, I personally am in support of it and would support uh that material that was presented again.
Okay.
I like this direction too. I think, I think it just keeps things a little more open, like if there's something that comes up that maybe isn't in this massive table that we were gonna design.
Yeah.
We have, it gives you guys, it gives the marshals the option, and you know, doesn't pigeonhole us into something that we have to kind of revise every year if something new happens, but it kind of gives it us the options or whoever needs to enforce it.
Yeah, plus it's common.
Yeah.
And so what I was gonna ask Cameron is whether we could uh come up with an example or two of codes from other municipalities that um, you know, sets work those options, if it really is an optional thing, uh, but, but maybe it's not necessary, uh, based on what um John just, John just offered, so.
It's for everybody to understand too, because then it's not like, wait, did we do this one or not this one? It's just across the board.
I think it, one of the pivotal moments for me was realizing that they're asking for this in addition to the ability to enforce criminally as they always have. So that's all still there. This is just another tool in the quiv of what they can do.
So you would, you wanna get this on the February agenda? Is that what you're thinking, Chris?
Uh, that is the plan technically, I mean
I think that's a good
Up top of my head, I can't remember what else we're
I think it's a good idea.
Other than perhaps sort of rules and procedures, uh, but this one, this is important.
This is important. I think we should get it on, for sure.
Yeah, there are a lot of potential enforcement needs that would Yeah, there are a lot of potential enforcement needs that would be more efficiently met through civil code enforcement um, that we talk about every day, so um, it would be good to, to get this one over with.
And then just to remind you, I mean, this is one step in the process. We don't have an administrative process developed yet for this. So it's not like once, if you were to pass this, that it would just be, that door would be off, open right then. Like we still have to actually figure out the administrative process of dealing with that and other things too.
Right, that includes like a different judge, right? Or, or maybe somebody's not a judge, but.
Right, I think they were saying an administrative law judge. So there's, there's a whole bunch of administrative stuff that'll have to happen, so, uh, but that'll kickstart us into really trying to figure that out.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions on the uh, staff reports? I have one, which is, there seem to be some unusual uh, event, events in your staff report. Do you want to elaborate on them or maybe not?
Well, to the degree that I can.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Like, I would um, guess that you're referring to the sexual assault case that we filed?
Yeah.
So uh, Saturday, the twenty-third, uh, Stephanie Spencer had a little work and we dispatched her a call at the Albion Day Lodge, um, where some of the workers uh, observed a young female who was according to them, uh, visually distressed. And we responded, um, had some initial information about uh, conduct between her and an adult male. Our initial field interviews uh, determined that we really did not have evidence of a crime at that point. We made a, a brief contact with um, the male and female determining that uh, uh, they are relatives.
Oh.
Um, they both denied anything being a miss at that point. We broke contact with them um, to reconnect with witnesses, uh, where we learned more specifically um, what sexual acts they had observed. Um, fortunately in our um, initial interview, uh, we didn't like what we saw, we dug a little deep and we gained some intelligence on uh, uh, who these people were and where they were standing in Airbnb and Sandy. And uh, once we knew that we had evidence of a crime, um, we reached out to some partner agencies, U P D and Sandy City Police responded. Uh, down to the Sandy Police uh, substation, we called a substantial amount of our people in off-duty for this, so Ted and I could go down and uh, see the case through in the valley. Um, the long and short of, of it is uh, through a very prolonged interview, uh, we were able to get uh, evidence that's supporting charging this uh, person with six counts of uh, forceful sex, sexual abuse of a child. Um, so he's been booked at the Salt Lake County Jail, who's being held without bail. Um, and we're awaiting, um, yeah, the court and district attorney action on it, uh, for his, his next court date.
This is the press, so it's not.
Yeah, it's, it's in the media. So, um, I will tell you, and, and I've been crying on Chris Collie's shoulder a lot about this the last two weeks, um. Yeah, things, things have changed for our little police department in the last decade. Um, these are the kind of investigations that we're very poorly equipped to handle. Um, we don't have any uh, forensic uh, interviewers for crimes against children, which you have to have to talk to the victim of, of the age of this case. Um, so to get those resources um, on the day before uh, Christmas Eve, when the whole world was shut down and try and get uh, Children's Justice Center in West Jordan opened for our case was a, a big lift. Um, thankfully, we've got some good friends, um, that for the cost of a phone call, we're willing to come out off-duty as well and, and help us through. But um, more and more, we, we've, we've got to become more adept, um, you know, managing whatever comes our way. There's, there are going to be those times where our friends aren't available and uh, um, yeah, this case had a lot of potential in my view, um, to go away, uh, like the Gabby Patino case in, in Moab. You know, it was a brief period where we had released uh, these people, um. You know, who, who knows what decisions the adult uh, would have made at that point, knowing the dude was under suspicion. Fortunately, we've put ourselves in a position where we could uh, rapidly pick the case back up and, and, and get them into property, we believed them to be at, so. But we need to stop being lucky. We, we need to start being good. And, you know, it's going to take some investment. And I was hoping to cry out to you, all of you tomorrow, we, uh, we've treated on all of this.
May I add a few things?
Yes.
I think whatever support that we can offer your team, we would love to do that. And I would like to give a public shout out to both of you, that my daughter was involved in the incident at Albion Basin and somebody told her about it, she was like, oh, that's not right, we should call the marshals. There was all this stuff and reasonably initially the case was, um, I, I don't want to, I don't want to use the wrong word, but like dismissed. But then because of who you are, you made it an absolutely okay space to say, hey, I have some further questions. You two are both amazing men, you are fantastic with women. It is very difficult as a, a woman to watch something that you don't feel is okay and you have to have a man that is willing to look at you, to pause, to let you feel okay to say, what I saw is not okay. There was another incident this month that Ted responded to that was so incredible. There was a young woman who was parked at seven o'clock in the morning and she was approached by somebody that said, what the fuck are you doing here? And so she did her business, she went cross-country skiing, she then came to her house and said, hey, I had this weird thing happen. And we're like, that's not okay, you need to call the marshal. And she's like, well, I'm not sure how I felt about, feel about it. And Ted was so incredibly warm and kind and just, you, you, you're doing a great job. I can see where all of us feel like we need more support when we deal with situations that are really uncomfortable for us. And dealing with sexual assault, young woman, questions of things is just really difficult for all of us. But if there's some legal work out there that we can support, I, I, I would like to advocate that.
Thank you so much. Um, you know, we'll, we'll try and live up to your comments.
You do.
Then, but let me tell you, uh, what I think was the greatest thing that happened is your daughter and other members of the community out of a, um, a sensitive community and feeling safe to say something when they know something's wrong, um, and be attentive to the details around them. Um, that's what we're grateful for.
And that little girl and her brother are very grateful for, like that's a life-changing thing that happened in our very small community. We should be proud of ourselves as a community.
Wow.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Um.
Thank you.
Are there any other highlights from the, this is the fucking reports?
Well, Mike also helped me yesterday too. Um, I got, I got harassed, I got this like repetitive phone call from this guy telling me that he was like with the Utah County Police and, and that I needed to show up to pro-vote to a certain address and that I had failed to appear in court and that he was gonna arrest me. And I was like, you can come to my house and arrest me and I'm gonna have my marshal friend here with you. And I was like, Mike, do I need to do anything? He's like, no, dude, this is just a joke. But he called me three times and I answered the phone three times, so that was probably in my phone. But, but he also pronounced my name right, which no one does. And that's what was really upsetting for me.
Did you ask for your card?
I, I was like, I was like, you are messing with me and I'm a hundred percent sure of that. Do you want my marshal friend to call you? You know, he's like, look ma'am, you just need to show up. I'm like, I'm pretty sure not. And they stopped harassing me. So, but thank you for taking my call.
Um, it doesn't have to be in that category, but does anybody else have anything to elaborate on their, their?
Is this, or what was, does this include the finance reports? I thought that finance, financial reports are great. It fills me, every month that I, you have the year-end balance projected and the last year's year-to-date actual, which is super revealing. We're eight hundred grand ahead year-to-date versus last year. That's incredible. Current year versus prior year, year-to-date, it's almost eight hundred thousand bucks ahead. So that's a great.
Like that again now.
Great financial management. I'm sure it's a result of great financial management.
Seven's my. Okay, end of uh, the uh, staff reports, let's go on to the mayor's report.
Uh, consent agenda.
Need to approve it.
Yeah, what's that?
Uh, item number seven on the agenda.
Item number seven, approval and consent of the uh, minutes of December thirteenth.
Yeah.
The national financial reports. All right, so this requires a uh, a vote?
Motion to approve?
Yes, you're making the motion.
Second.
At least the seconding, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close? All right, that takes us to item, the mayor's report. Um. Every month, the mayors of Salt Lake County gather and discuss topics of mutual interest. Tragically, that topic is generally homelessness. And how to service a burgeoning population among housed people in the valley. While that condition is not as evident in our local community, it certainly is in the larger community and it affects all of us. With respect to these, every, these monthly mayor's, uh, mayor's conferences, uh, last year we hosted the mayors in July. In the December meeting of the, of the council mayors, which I was not able to attend, um, they invited themselves to come back here again, which is kind of like, gee, I love your New Year's party, I'll be there again next year. What? So, uh, it to me, um, it's evidently they liked it. It's a good opportunity to show our town off and emphasize the fragility of its qualities. So secondly, I'm strongly in favor of a trailhead toilet in place of uh, at my end of a, 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 not a high end. Uh, I strongly in favor of trailhead toilet, toilet in place during uh, my administration and the Starkman uh, direction. Chris and I are meeting with a forest service rep on, uh, he thinks to work on sighting. And uh, interestingly enough, as I walked through the parking lot last night, uh, a citizen input came out of the blue saying, boy, we really need a toilet here because there are people, you know, not eliminated properly. The rural win forty-five day legislative session starts soon, um, and uh, we'll start, we will be keeping an eye on the uh, items uh, relevant to us. We're a lobbyist and watchdog. We'll switch her into an attack dog mode if something comes up that's uh, threatens our interest. Something that would very much be in our interest would be to eliminate the roadside parking on the downhill side of S R two ten year round. That's the thing that Mike Mon spoke to. This is more, this, this I think is more of a green than a near-term prospect that it's, but in my opinion, we should keep pushing on this because it really hangs things up. Senator Wassas' commission held a retreat on January eighth. The first line uh, copy to breast was to the old top with N E I S. The C W C took a position that they strongly prefer an outcome that the phase one, one along with nationwide parking reservation system is bound to solve the problem and a goal is not necessary. Now, I don't know how much sway the C W C has, but it's better that they've taken this position than not. And speaking of retreats, we all know that uh, we're gonna have one tomorrow. Most of the day they'll allow us, Chris has organized it, we have a facilitator will address long-term plans for the town. And um, the um, next town, town council meeting will be on Valentine's Day, February fourteenth. And at a time to be determined, currently at three P M, but I think we may want to revise that.
Um, you'd have to revise that in this meeting unless you're holding a special meeting.
Shall we revise it in this meeting? You want to say anything, Carol?
I was, I, I heard Jen say in the beginning of this meeting that, that the year meetings were set in June for ours. I would like to make a proposal that we change the meeting time, but I want to be respectful of everyone's time. But I would prefer that the meetings are set at a later time. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to make a proposal in this meeting to change all the meetings to a later time, subject to a vote, but I, I want to make sure I didn't like backdoor anybody. I, I did speak with, uh, or have communicated in the past with councilperson Byrne and councilperson Schilling. I have not spoken with councilwoman Morgan. I have also spoken with um, the mayor, so I don't want to come across as sabotaging something.
Um.
Do we want to make it later on Valentine's Day?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's easy to do, is it not?
We could just change that one now.
We could change the one now and then work on others later.
Yeah.
And everybody can think about it. Like, I don't wanna, I don't want to be.
And what we're going to do at four o'clock on Valentine's Day, what works for you? What makes it work for you?
Just a little bit later. Any later helps because today was two thirty because we came in a little bit early, you know, so it's, later it's very helpful for me in every way.
Okay. Well, let me make a proposal that we change the uh, the, the time of start of the Valentine's Day meeting to four P M.
Certainly.
Discussion? Good. Is there something we need to vote on?
Does it gonna work for you, Elise?
I believe you do because you're changing something that you have voted on.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I, though my only comment to Roger is that we didn't make it too much later. I just want to be, I mean, when we were doing evening meetings this last year before June, it just seemed like our meetings would go really late and all of us would just get really tired and hungry. And I also want to be respectful of, you know, our staff members don't live up here and so I want to make sure that we give people time to get home. So four o'clock seems fine, but I just didn't want to go too late.
Four o'clock gets it in the sweet spot for me.
Okay.
Just way, which is great.
Um, but I don't know, I mean, I'm fine, fine changing the February meeting. I don't know if this is something we need to do before every meeting or if we can change the rest of the meeting schedule. I think a question for.
For the public's purpose and for everyone's planning purpose, if this is an action that you want to take for all meetings for the rest of this fiscal year, we should actually put it on the agenda for next month and we should change the official schedule. I think that's good for everybody. Um, I think.
But also change next month's time to four o'clock today.
Right.
But, right, you're asking just to change only, we're only making a decision about the February fourteenth meeting today. And then at that meeting, we'll come forth with a proposal to change the rest of the meeting schedule for the fiscal year.
So, so we request four o'clock?
Beautiful. That's perfect for me.
Good.
And calling Cameron, I, I believe, I mean, we have, um, I think we can take that action, right? I don't.
Yeah, for just the February meeting, yes.
Yeah.
At least, do you think that it's um, most meetings would end by six and that?
I mean, I, I mean, we, most of the time we keep our meetings on the two hours, but I mean, there is the potential, you know, we might have work sessions or something at three.
Right, and that's why it was work sessions at two before, so.
So we have a first and a second?
Okay. All in favor?
For February change.
Aye.
February change.
Correct, that's it.
None opposed.
And I'll put meeting schedule on the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, nine, discussion of possible action, the resolution twenty twenty-four R one concerning appointment of the town marshal. I think we've had actually some.
He's leaving the room.
Is Cameron that? Cameron, are you gonna speak, speak to these just a little bit in the introduction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, just to, so to kind of lay the groundwork on this, um, these resolutions are, are brought to, to the council at the council's request. Uh, from our last meeting. The, the town used to have an ordinance that after every general election, the council would reaffirm or reappoint the existing appointed officials. And then when we reworked the code language. Uh, delegating the mayor's authority to the town manager, we, we removed that reappointment language every two years. And so at the last council meeting, the discussion was that the council wanted to have this. The part of the difficulty is that uh, there is no. Legal functionality to reappoint. It's, it's essentially a confirmation of the existing appointments. Um, if the council wanted to have a different person appointed, they would need to take that action. And so that's why the language in these uh resolutions are phrased the way they are. It's a confirming of the appointment. Uh, I think the one exception is the, a budget officer because I don't know that we had appointed that uh position previously. Um, the only other comment I would have is. The uh state code does allow us to close a meeting. Um, for the discussion of the character or professional competence of an individual. And so I would recommend if you are going to have a discussion uh involving that topic for any of these positions, I would recommend that you close the meeting. Um, you're certainly not obligated to, but I think uh general decorum and past practice, most municipalities do that so that they avoid. Uh, any comments or disclosure of confidential information uh about someone's character or professional competence. And I think with that, did I cover everything, Chris?
Yeah, that's a good intro. Thanks, Cameron. Um. I guess I did also just wanna say that uh, you know, I'm happy to be, to offer these resolutions confirming appointment of. Mike Moore to be the town marshal, Jen Plancy to be the clerk, and Craig Hartmark to be the treasurer. I. Um, they fulfill their, their duties uh in an exemplary fashion. I think we all get uh value beyond their fulfillment of their statutory uh. Obligations, to say the least, and really beyond their job descriptions as written, so um. And I appreciate having had the opportunity to talk to you about it. About each of them, so.
But well, I move that we adopt resolution twenty-four R one confirming the appointment of the town marshal. I'll just kick us off.
Explanation point, second it.
Oh, damn, second it.
Oh.
I wanted to be able to second something, so I, I moved right in there.
So this is a resolution. Discussion, I mean. Okay, all in favor?
Oh, hold on, sorry, it's a roll call vote.
Oh, a roll call.
Yes, cuz it's a resolution.
These all are gonna be roll call, roll call.
Mayor Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrne.
Aye.
Councilmember Ansel.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Schilling.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next item, this discussion possible adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four R two confirming appointment of a town clerk and appointing the budget officer. Being the same person.
So move.
Any discussion?
Uh. My only discussion is that, um. I think Jen's done a great job as our clerk. And that this appointment or official naming for the uh. Town budget officer, it is overdue. And uh, congratulations.
Yeah. The one comment, Jen has done an outstanding job. I thought prior to, and perhaps you've already done this, was there some education that you hoped that we were gonna offer you or further education or do we already do that? Or was that just something on the, on the side?
Um, I am fulfilling getting a, it's called a um. C M C, which is like a clerk certification, and so I'm in the process of that. There's some timing and stuff, but I do take advantage of training opportunities in my role.
Great, are there other?
I don't feel like I'm held back by anything.
Great, are there other opportunities that you were hoping for that you have felt comfortable approaching counsel with or is there anything?
Not that I'm aware of, yeah.
Okay.
This is, as far as I know, you're the first person that's worked for us that's pursued this, and it's uh, it's akin to an M B A for a town clerk. It's a serious amount of curriculum and uh, good on you for pursuing it. I'm sure it's gonna take a, a fair bit of effort.
Takes a few years.
A few years?
Yeah, it was a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, and there, there is a masters, so.
Good.
That's awesome.
Very cool.
Did somebody, no one seconded my motion?
Second.
Sorry.
Any further discussion?
I broke down with my comments.
All in favor?
I'll do a roll call vote.
Oh, sorry.
I know. Uh, councilmember Ansel.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Byrne.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Schelling.
Aye.
Mayor Burke.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, assessment of possible action for positions twenty twenty-four dash R dash three concerning appointment of. Appointment of uh, confirming the appointment of. Very high market town, town treasurer.
I will move that motion.
Okay.
I will second it.
Discussion? You know, one that's something I would say is a pretty responsible job in. Doing an essential volunteer basis. And that's uh, to have that kind of expertise, volunteer for the benefit of the town is really great. And that's the kind of. Community spirit I would, I would. I appreciate.
Yeah, and I, I would also note that, um. You know, things, there were some rough spots at the beginning, but um, you know, you've shown a lot of growth in. How you're doing with the rest of us has become, uh, you know, I, I liked it when you, I liked talking with you and, and our exchange of information and. And um, I feel good about um. The direction of that, our relationship with you has had.
Okay, shall we call for the questions and move to second it?
Yes, uh, councilmember Byrne.
Aye, yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Schelling.
Yes.
Councilmember, or Mayor Burke.
Aye.
And councilmember Ansel.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, item twelve, discussion possible action to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four. Yes, O dash one regarding compensation of elected and statutory officers. You wanna say anything about the compensation, Jen?
I'm gonna um.
The compensation itself, well. Thanks, Jen.
My, I guess my question is, yeah, what's prompting us to vote on it? Is this something we have to do every?
It's a statute.
Okay.
Yeah, all municipal governments have to, um, the legislative body of uh municipal government has to. Uh, approve the compensation of appointed officers by resolution annually.
Okay.
Um, by ordinance, rather, sorry.
It's not really new. It's just that it was a modest non-compliance, really something we just weren't aware of in the past.
Yes, cuz I was, cuz I was gonna say, I don't remember voting on this every year, but I'm glad that we're doing it correctly.
This is kind of a, a catch-up, like for us to be compliant, but you will start to see this on a more regular basis as the budget and as.
It typically gets wrapped up in the bu, the, the packet of budget approval documents in most cities.
So we should see it every year now going forward.
I like it.
Was that, was, was that what you asked about?
Yeah, mostly just why, what prompted this. I'm like, I'm voting on this that often and the years I've been on here.
Yeah, you have the grandma on the council there.
Grandma.
Oh, seconded.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote here. Where Elise, uh, councilmember Schelling.
Yes.
Mayor Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Ansel.
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan, yeah.
Okay, discussion of possible actions to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four. O two regarding uh updating section fif, one fifteen one of the town code regarding bond and crime insurance, crime coverage. I think this is really your.
Uh, it can be, uh, um. This came up, I think, in the process of. Planning for the town manager appointment last month. Um, this is part of the town manager ordinance that was passed last March, I believe. Uh, we were looking into getting a bond, I believe it was when we were looking into getting a bond. Um, Jen worked with uh the. Utah level government's trust our insurer. To understand new guidance about um how to, how to ensure coverage uh for the town manager and other public treasures, is the language from. The, that white paper, which essentially means anybody in a, in a public office who has any association with, with public funds. Um, so. Essentially, we, um, the proposal is to acknowledge that our um, our crime insurance uh policy. Provides uh well, a, a great deal more coverage um than the bonds typically do, and it serves the same purpose, so. We thought it would be more efficient and cheaper for the town. Um, just to, to add this option into the ordinance uh to allow the crime insurance policy to. To provide this coverage rather than going and having to get a special bond. So we discussed that in the last meeting. The council indicated, um. You all would, you know, be in support of that. This is just us following up on that to make it official.
I move we approve this ordinance.
Second it? Wow, I'd like, I'd like to make one point of discussion here, and that is, I think we have a pretty good system for protecting. The fiscal resources of the town. Um, and um, we have two signatures on each check. And uh, as far as I know, nothing, there's no layouts other than this through the checking account. Is that right?
Um.
There are things like, yeah.
Just receiving cash in the office and receiving payments and things like that. There's town property. There's, I mean, I think there's a lot of things covered in this.
Okay. Um, well, I feel comfortable that we are um, protecting our physical, our fiscal. Situation. More than adequately. And so I think this, the idea of the, our regular insurance coverage is just fine.
If, if last year's. Modest problem that we had with uh, I don't even remember the details, was the credit card or uh.
It was.
This age.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would, would our insurance have covered that?
Different insurance.
Uh.
Well, that's not even, no, different, those.
Because it wasn't a fraud. It wasn't an internal fraud.
No, yeah, external.
Oh, so, different insurance would have covered.
Yeah.
That was what it was.
There you go.
So, yeah, and it's not, it's not even insurance what we have to cover that. It's like a fraud protection program and it's a fraud protection benefit we pay for and. That was a long time ago. It wasn't a long time ago, but um, with the bank, I don't know if you wanna speak to that anymore, Jen?
Um, not quite sure what you're referring to, but I mean, it was very obvious to the bank that these were fraudulent.
Yeah.
And we, you know, submitted paperwork on every one of them and most of these payments we got back within thirty days. I mean, it was.
And they made.
It was, there was ver, yes, yeah, we didn't lose just our time.
Yeah, the downside was, it was a lot of.
That was the biggest thing, was the time and dealing with it, but we recouped a hundred percent of them.
Great. As it should be.
Shall I do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Ansel.
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan, yeah. Councilmember Schelling.
Yes.
Mayor Burke.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, um.
Before we adjourn, can I make?
We're not there.
Sorry?
But uh, well, we, we have a few more items. Uh, but you wanna.
Just a quick question to Cameron, following up with something you said a minute ago about. Us wanting these um consents. You know, I sort of remember that more as us asking if we were still doing these consents rather than like us demanding it. Just to clarify, but. Now that everybody has been approved and we've changed over the new town manager ordinance and all these people have been proposed. We won't do these consents annually in the future anymore, right? For existing people.
That's correct, and I apologize if I misunderstood. I just, when, when we had talked about it, I thought, well. That's what I heard and that's what I had in my notes, but yes, going forward. Um, a person that is appointed serves in that appointed position until replaced. And so there obviously in, in the world of municipalities is a time when. Somebody that has been appointed can't serve in that position, and so they would be suspended or. You know, placed on a happen, or whatever the case may be, but they're actually not removed until they're replaced. Because the position has to be filled.
Yep, and that was all really what your letter was about with the yellow highlighting.
Yes.
And so I think we're now all on the same page. They're going forward. The yellow highlighting is the rule of the land.
Correct.
Points. Just the, they'll have.
Say that, yes.
You have to all.
Great, thank you.
Okay, uh, update on the January town council retreat, Chris?
Okay, so, um. Thank you. Again and again, um, for participating in this, for participating in the retreat prep. Uh, which, you know, quite imperfectly occurred over the holiday period. Um, I hope you had a chance to dig into the packet. Um, it was fun trying to determine who made what comments. Had a little bit too much faith in my ability to do so, but um, you know.
Sweet.
Yeah.
Um, we are, uh, we're gonna go ahead and move the retreat schedule. We, I've discussed this with each of you, um, we're gonna remove the, the retreat schedule at ten thirty uh tomorrow morning.
Ten or ten thirty?
Well, we'll do doors at ten.
Okay.
Coffee and a little assortment, a servant of um morning refreshments, and then um session at ten thirty. Um, so this, so we'll kick lunch back to twelve fifteen. It'll be a sort of a short lunch break and then um I will make a presentation while you all um. Uh, you know, have dessert from lunch, enjoy some cookies. Uh, we'll take a break in the mid-afternoon. Um, we wanna conclude the retreat at fifty. Um, we're gonna help our facilitators get up the canyon in the morning. Uh, we're in, we're in touch with them. Uh, we made this plan to shift the schedule. Uh, based on the forecast, and it was a predictable um conflict with the weather that has arisen, um. Doing it this time of the year, so. Uh, we had to make a plan, an updated plan with the folks who are in town, folks who are gonna cater lunch. Um, yesterday, so we, we made the call based on the forecast. Um. But I believe the word on the street is that there will not be a road closure. Um, I don't know if my mindset is driving that for us, but there's no plan for a road closure. Um, we should probably all plan for significant congestion on the road. Um, so it doesn't really change like our timing on getting up the canyon without getting stuck, but um. You know, if somebody should happen to have something come up, uh, hopefully this ten thirty time gives us, gives us all time to. Um, get there and, and get so, and also gives us a little bit of time to set up this, the chamber in the morning so that we don't like, we gotta do it, you know, right after this meeting. We can talk about that more afterwards, but um, I know Carolyn, you're not available for the whole meeting. I appreciate you tremendously. I really appreciate you. Um, making adjustments that you made just to, just to be able to participate and I, and I hope you get out a lot of it, out of it, and. John, I know that um, we've talked in the past couple of weeks about how. Um, you know, we sort of like imposed this burden on the council and it wasn't necessarily a, a council project to come up with this. Um, I'm really sensitive to that and. Um, you know, the, the plan for this meeting did kind of come from, from Roger and I, and we, we asked you all to fund a budget for it and ask you to participate and. And then, and then the plan was made. Um, I wanna be careful about burdening the council with uh additional time commitments beyond regular meetings. Um. This town manager model is gonna take additional town council time to figure out. Um, but the manager needs a plan to implement and um, we need to make a plan in public. Uh, we need to, we need to update the plan routinely. We need to have a, a regular process for, for updating a plan, so. Um, I look forward to finding the right approach to this kind of work with you all in the future. Um, I'm sure we'll find the right balance, the right timing. Um, and so forth. I know that uh, Pauline and Cameron are participating in, in a retreat for one of the other cities they advise um tomorrow, otherwise they, they might join us. Uh, and I spoke to a couple of other city managers who are doing council retreats this month as well, kind of as part of the budget cycle. So anyways, it's just, you know, we're, um, we're a special place and we have special constraints and we'll learn to work with those and within those and. Um, thanks again for. And, um, thanks again for participating, and I'm really looking forward to this. I think it's gonna be a really nice few hours of talking and learning and thinking.
I'm, I'm really excited for it. I mean, I think I've told you this before, like, I've been on the council for a while now, and we've never done anything like this. Um, so I think that this is great. I, like I said before, I want to give you guys what you guys need as a staff, and I think committing a day is gonna do this. It's so hard to do, to give, get things done in these town council meetings in a two hours or three hours of once a month. And I think that you, with this new position, and we have a new council, I think this is the perfect time to do this. It is something we need to do annually. Um, I'm supportive of that as well. Uh, so anyways, I'm looking forward to it. It is a little bit of a rough time of year, but at the same time, it's like the beginning of a new council, the beginning of, of your position, and so the timing that way makes sense.
I want that to hear.
Yeah, I think this is great.
Like amazing amount.
I'm really excited.
Time talking to me, and you're awesome. And that you saw it outside council to like help this happen, and that you asked each of us to meet with that person. You, you've done a great job.
Looking forward to the snacks.
Yeah.
I feel like, I feel like I'm, uh, uh, the first day of school at a new school as the new kid. So I, I'm just excited to come and be there. In fact, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry I didn't make it up. Today, my flight got in in time, and I was coming up canyon, and it closed down, so I called Jen, and rather than try and half zoom on the phone and show up late, I just thought I would zoom from down here. But I, I'm really stoked to get up there and, and put everybody together, because I think a lot will come out of it that's intangible. You know, just commenting on you, I'm, I'm very excited about it, and, uh, I've gone through it and done the survey, and sorry, I was off the back there for a minute. I think I was making a turkey when the gal started pounding my phone for the interview, and I just didn't, it was just the wrong time for me. Um, he turned it in front of my mother. I was making a turkey, so that's like extra pressure, right?
It is.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's an exciting prospect, and, um, and we're looking forward to having the communication with you.
Likewise.
Um, I expect that we'll come out of this with all sorts of, uh, eager resolves and action items and so forth. And the challenge will be to keep up the enthusiasm.
We'll see how it goes, yeah. Uh, we'll see how it goes. I mean, uh, you know, we wanna, we wanna get some space from the urgent, uh, but we all know what an urgent environment this is, and we don't, you know, uh, sometimes you have to deal with much urgent, and we all know that. Uh, but, but we'll take steps forward, and this could be great tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Um, can I ask you a question logistically? Um, we're, we're not, this is an in-person meeting. We're not necessarily planning any Zoom accommodations, but that is, we have a backup plan, but I'd like to, should I like deploy that? Does anybody think there's a chance that they might not make it tomorrow? It?
I, I'm gonna be there, but I, 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 I need to like, I have a plane to catch, so I was hoping to park literally at Arlenia of the Snows and stay as late as possible, depending on what I thought was happening with the traffic. Because it's possible that I can complete most of the meeting. I have a five thirty flight or five twenty flight. So, um, so my only concern is like parking like a turkey and not getting a ticket.
Well, well, Jen, we're arguing.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mike, sorry.
I'm getting a turkey ticket as we speak. Like blocking the snowcat in over here, I don't know.
Okay.
I meant, I meant to, um, come prepared with recommendations for parking. But.
I asked.
Well.
They could take that.
Right, you could take it in trouble.
Yeah.
Um, or.
Not you, but.
From where?
Oh, that's great.
You could possibly call for a pickup at the end of the.
Yes.
I'll, I'll walk down.
Okay. Well, that's a great option, but, um, anyways, Dan?
Yeah, so I, I should ski over. Don't, don't park up, don't drive a truck over and. That's a legitimate question. Is that smart?
I think parking's gonna be an issue tomorrow at ten thirty, which was why I.
Yeah.
Got you, okay, I'll ski over.
I was gonna watch.
You wanna like a carpool then?
Okay, I, uh, I'll, I'll hit you offline as a two-person, non-forum, unofficial, socially.
Right, not all the time. But not all the time.
Right starter. Oh, go ahead.
So this, so if we do not, it's just, it's.
Thanks, Chris. Good night.
Bye, Chris.
Bye, Chris.
Us schlepping and setting up the Zoom is, we will do it, but it is not preferred. And that's what I'm just trying to get your buy-in to support me in making that decision, because I don't want, oh, wait, I, if you text me if something happens tonight, we'll like get there first thing in the morning, and we'll set up the TV.
I'm, I'm there. We're not getting COVID from Roger today.
Yeah. John, I'll come over to your house. I'll just drive, I'll just drive over to your place, meet you there. Cool, sounds good.
That's a nice thing for us as staff, because it is one less thing that we have to focus on during the meeting, and it allows us to actually engage in the meeting.
However, it will be recorded, correct?
It will be recorded with that device, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so we're required to do that. Yes, we will just not be, um, live streaming. Right, no hour.
Yeah, sort of dovetailing on something Chris said about, uh, time management, and, and I think this ties to your comments too. Um, you know, I'm gonna speak for the group and say, we do appreciate it when you get this month's work on this month's agenda, and we don't have to have a special meeting. I think that just works a lot better for us. I know sometimes it happens, but we really do appreciate it when you're able to organize our tasks such that we can actually deal with them in the one meeting a month, which is kind of, you know, where most of us started this anyway. It's hard, it's hard adding, it's inordinately hard adding, and, uh, extra meetings, turning them up, it would be better to stay a little later at one meeting.
I think that's one reason why we always did the work sessions, like, right before the regular town council meeting, because it's just easier to.
Right, I think it's the work sessions that have been happening on non-meeting days that have been the sort of the tricky ones, just giving us some feedback.
Maybe they had, they don't do those. I haven't had those in a while, right?
Um, I think John is referring probably most pointedly to like the budget committee.
We had a very small budget committee meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Happening off timing, so we're gonna, we're gonna discuss that at the February meeting.
Yeah, yeah, budget process.
Part of that.
Great.
We'll give you guys some options.
Okay, that takes us to new business. Great, no, new business.
I got my business let in in the middle of.
Now you're, it's now you're really hard right now.
It's really. Nice.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Do you have to roll call it?
No.
All right.
Aye, aye.
Run back into the gate or?
See you guys.
Thank you, Dan.
All of these.
Awesome.
We have to do it, I'm curious if I can.